We are going to go ahead and reconvene the Lompoc City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. If I could get everyone to quiet down for a little bit. We've got a lot of things to celebrate tonight, so I really appreciate all of the community coming out to share in this exciting evening. So as we return from closed session, Mr. Malavi, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met tonight to discuss the one item on the agenda. It's an existing litigation matter. The Council gave direction to staff on that item, but there's no reportable action.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. I would like to invite Chaplain Keith McClellanford for invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Good evening. Let us pray. Almighty God, Creator and Sustainer of life, we invite your presence, wisdom and guidance in this meeting and in all deliberations and decisions. We give thanks for the freedom to gather, and we are thankful for the freedom we have to express opinions and concerns without fear of recrimination or fear of being marginalized because of our voice. We thank you for each individual who has been given leadership responsibility and service to our community, and in particular, those who are willing to consider and place a concern of others above their own needs and interests. As we give thanks for our many blessings, we also acknowledge that there is still much work to be done. May all in positions of authority and power seek not only to do the most good for the most people, but foremost have the conviction to do what is right and good in your side, O Lord. May we not be a community divided by expressions of them or those people, or by individual or group demands for special distinction, but may we seek to be united and at peace wherever possible through inclusive expressions of we and us. May each one here tonight, and each one listening online, and those in our community be given your strength to face each day with courage, and wherever possible, may we be your instruments of peace and hope in our community. Tonight, I pray a special blessing upon Captain Kevin Martin as he has sworn in to serve as the Chief of Police to our city, the city of Lompoc. We are blessed to have as our Chief of Police a person who has been tested and found worthy of serving and leading, the dedicated men and women of our city's law enforcement personnel, personnel who are willing to serve and protect even when doing so places them in harm's way. I pray that Kevin is responsive to the concerns and needs of our diverse community, and I pray that our City Council members and our City Manager provide the kind of support, guidance and direction that is a wind beneath his wings and not a headwind of discouragement. Lord, as their chaplain, on behalf of Chaplain Fetterman and Chaplain Nelson, I ask for your blessing and cloak of protection of body, mind and spirit, and all who serve in our police department and our fire department. Lord, I pray not only for your protection, but I ask that you give them courage, courage to face and conquer their own fears, courage to take them where others will not go. I ask that you give them strength, strength of body to protect others, and strength of character to withstand temptation and complacency. I ask that you empower them with dedication, dedication to the job, to do it well on behalf of the community whom they have pledged to keep safe. Give each of them, O Lord, a spirit of care and compassion for those who have placed their trust in them, and please, Lord, through it all, be by their side. And finally, all-knowing God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of your purpose. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. And everybody said, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have several exciting things happening in the next 20 minutes or so, so I would ask that you stay with us while we go through the swearing-in ceremony, a couple of proclamations, a certificate of appreciation, and some recognition of young athletes in our community. After those events, we will take a break, so that those of you who are here for your different reasons can stop, socialize, take a few photos, and thank AAUW for bringing refreshments tonight. So we'll begin with the official swearing-in of Police Chief Kevin Martin, Ledmar City Clerk Stacy Haddon.
You want Cindy to come up with him? Just stand up with him. Ready? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Kevin Martin.
I, Kevin Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support the laws and policies.
That I will support the laws and policies.
Of the city of Lompoc.
Of the city of Lompoc.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of Chief of Police.
Of the office of Chief of Police.
Of the city of Lompoc.
Of the city of Lompoc.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Try not to fall. So I'd first like to thank the City Manager, Neil Albro, the City Council, for their confidence in me to succeed as Lompoc's next Chief of Police. Second, I want to thank my family, especially my wife Gina. Police families make many sacrifices as they support the career of their officer. My family is no different. I got you flowers.[506.31][506.31](laughing) Where's Joe? I got you flowers. It's a little big. One of the boys get it. I next want to thank the law enforcement leaders and professionals present tonight. Sheriff Bill Brown, Under Sheriff Craig Bonner, FBI Supervising Agent Charles Kincaid, Chief Deputy District Attorney Sonia Bajeste, and Supervising District Attorney Ben Ladnig. We also have the Chief of the District Attorneys, Tina Perkins, and Commander Greg Jelly here as well. I also want to recognize those Chiefs of Police I have worked for, and they have influenced my career. Sheriff Brown, when he was Chief of Police here. Chief Davney, where you at? I officially have the keys.[555.41][555.41](laughing) Chief Ralston, who couldn't be here tonight, and Chief Walsh, where you at?
Where you at?
You started this. You started me on this path many years ago, and I thank you for that.[568.62][568.62](laughing) But I owe special thank you to Chief Joseph Mariani for his mentorship and his investment in me and all of the staff at the Lompoc Police Department. Sorry, I missed my place here. Chief Mariani began mentoring me on his first day at the Lompoc Police Department. He continued to teach until the day he retired. His guidance was not just to me, but to all the department members and personnel who were willing to accept that mentorship and instruction. Had Chief Mariani not shared his wisdom and been willing to mentor me, I would not be standing here today as your Chief of Police. To the staff at Lompoc PD, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to the citizens of Lompoc. You're an amazing group of people, and I am honored to be your chief. Twenty-nine years ago this month, I stood in what is now my office when Bob Hebert was Chief of Police. He swore me in as a young officer, much younger than I am today. And what I take from all this is my goal as your chief is to create an environment where a young officer starting their career today can be mentored and developed into the future Chief of Police, so that the city never has to go outside ever again. And that's just one of many goals that we have, or that I personally have. So I am humbled and honored to lead this wonderfully dedicated group of people, and I will work hard every day for them and for the citizens of this community, and I thank
You can get off that knee just for a little bit, and if you need 20 bucks, we've all decided we'd chip in and loan it to you.[721.32][721.32](laughing) That's $5 apiece. We can cover that. If there's a representative from AAUW to receive the Equal Pay Day proclamation and then stick around for the second proclamation, this is an important month and an important day, and I think it's a good time also with the number of young female athletes that we have in the room to hear this issue. This is a proclamation for Equal Pay Day, whereas more than 60 years after the passage of Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in 2022 typically earned 83% of what men earned, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas according to Graduating to Pay a Gap, a 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which gives back to employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap, and now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas according to one estimate, college-educated women working full-time earn more than half a million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime. And whereas four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. And whereas a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted into a Social Security or pension benefit formula. And whereas according to census data in 2020 in California, the earning ratio of women was just 88%. And whereas March 14th symbolizes the time in 2023 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 14th, 2023 as Equal Pay Day in the city of Lompoc, and urge our citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. And as a representative of our community, what I would like to promote is the fact that public service and jobs in the public sector, we have to publish our pay scales. So it is very transparent, and doesn't matter what your sex is as to what your pay is. So there are opportunities that do exist for you to have that. It is unfortunate that it doesn't exist in every, and this is why we bring recognition to it. So thank you, ladies, for bringing that to our attention, and there's your first proclamation.[927.25][927.25](applause) Our next proclamation is celebrating National Women's History Month. Whereas (laughing), there you go, nice young women in the back, knowing how to cheer from the great sports activities, good lungs to cheer. Whereas the month of March has been declared Women's History Month, and whereas this year's theme, "Celebrating Women Who Tell Our Stories," recognizes women past and present who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, and more. The timely theme honors women in every community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art, pursuing truth, and reflecting the human condition decade after decade. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home, and have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Women's History Month.[1083.12][1083.12](applause)
Thank you, Mayor Osborne, and as AAUW is a nonpartisan organization open to all individuals, we want to promote our mission of equity for all. We support STEM activities throughout the community, speech track, tech track, sending eighth-grade girls to STEM camp, scholarships for our local seniors, and many programming activities for the community. We don't want any hidden figures of any kind.
I'd like to call up former Human Service Commissioner Kenny Agbodaiki. If I pronounce that incorrectly, you can correct me. I have been struggling all day and forgot to ask somebody. All right, Kenny is an amazing young man. He started out with us as an employee, and when he went on to his calling in life, he actually came back and volunteered as a Human Services Commissioner and spent time with us from 2017 to 2022 on that commission. And we want to thank him for being a genuine, professional, and concerned citizen, and for your time and service. He has come back on board with our city and will be serving as our code enforcement officer. So we are very proud to have you back and thankful for all the work you did as a volunteer, and look to watch you grow in this position and continue to be a part of our community. All right, so we have quite the crowd here because there is so many exciting things happening in our community. It makes me very proud to be your mayor. So what I'll do is I'll call each group up, since there's so many of you, but let me give you the order so you can start preparing to come up. We'll go with the girls tennis, then boys soccer, then girls basketball, and then girls soccer. So if I could have the Lompoc High School girls tennis team come forward along with So on November 11th, 2022, the girls tennis team coached by Michael Montrose and assisted by a Lompoc City employee, Richard Grasik, won the CIF Central Section Championship for Division III at Kerman High School by a score of five to four. And here's something even better, the last championship was 40 years ago in 1982.[1286.25][1286.25](applause) These young women include Vera Ortiz, Rihanna Stoop, Gabriel Arias, Gabriela Arias, Emma White, Lola Sukup, Esmeralda Ortiz, Sofia Lourios, Ava Velasco, Mia Jansen, Catherine Reyes, and Deanna Ramirez, and my apologies if I mispronounced anybody's name. They will each be getting a certificate of recognition from the city that says, in recognition of being part of the Lompoc High School girls tennis team to win the CIF Central Section Championship for Division III for the first time in 40 years, congratulations, All right, I'll let you take these and hand them out, and next I'd love to have the boys soccer team come forward. Go ahead and go to the back, and you can take some work photos.[1351.25][1351.25](applause) Keep going, you can block me, that's fine. It's more important to get all of you guys up there. So on February 25th of 2023, the boys soccer team coached by James Baca Jr. and assisted by Luis Hilario and Carlos Servin won the CIF Central Section Championship for Division III at Rivadell High School by a score of four to two. This is the first CIF championship for boys soccer.[1417.25][1417.25](applause) Let's introduce you to these young men really quick. We have Eric Jimenez, Adrian Gonzalez, Andreas Beragan, Juan Reyes, Anthony Villa, Cesar Solis, James Villanueva, Benny Nicholas, Kevin Multabon, Enrique Velasquez, Mizel Carbahal, Carlin Durret, Romeo Jimenez, Andreas Herrera, Mark Salazar, Pablo Rosendres, Andrew Yang, Jesus Hernandez, Jesse Sandoval, and Angelo Nunez, Jeraya Zuniga, Rudy Mendez, Roberto Cortez, and Christian Stallworth. And you get a high five for helping me with the names.[1471.41][1471.41](applause) And each one of these young men will receive a certificate from the city that says, in recognition of being part of the first Lompoc High School boys soccer team to win the CIF Central Section Championship for Division III, we're very proud of you all.[1493.66][1493.66](applause) All right, if I could have the girls basketball team come forward.[1506.25][1506.25](applause) On February 25th of 2023 this year, the girls basketball team coached by Claudia Toronas and assisted by Paul Toronas won the CIF Central Section Championship for Division IV at the Sealan Arena by a score of 32 to 31.[1559.83][1559.83](applause) It's been 29 years since their last championship.[1570.66][1570.66](applause) Let's go ahead and introduce you to these amazing young women, Michaela Figaro, Kylie Garcia, Sierra Bailey, Marian Mangino?
Maran?
Maran Mangino. I love these Unique Hill, unique names. Ava Galagos, Grace Baird, Haley Sager, Jalissa Dixon, Mia Jansen, and Tara Toronas.[1606.75][1606.75](applause) They will each get a certificate from the city that says, in recognition of being part of the Lompoc High School girls basketball team to win the CIF Central Section Championship for Division IV for the first time in 29 years, congratulations, you're all amazing.[1629.66][1629.66](applause) And last but not least, the girls soccer team. So on February 23rd of this year, girls soccer coached by Roberto Miranda and assisted by Armando Polito and Hector Herrera, won the CIF Central Section Championship for Division IV at Bishop Union High School by a score of five to one. This is the first CIF championship for girls soccer.[1710.91][1710.91](applause) Okay, I'm going to get to butcher some more names, so ladies, don't hesitate to correct me. Tyla Alange? Tayla, all right. Annabelle Andalon, Abigail Anaguano, Amelia Anaguano, Gabriela Arias, Elizabeth Vazcas Bautista, America Dela Cruz, Sarah Gavilan, Lee Herrera, Lauren Jansen, Ruby Mares, Valerie Marin, Sofia Martinez, Sofia Ortiz, Samantha Osorio, Yvette Rodriguez, Isabella Romo, Judy Ruiz, Giselle Silva, Emmy Tate, Teagan Thompson, Haley Munoz, and Sienna Hernandez And the city is also issuing a certificate of recognition for each of these young ladies in recognition of being part of the first Lompoc High School girls soccer team to win the CIF Central Section Championship for Division IV. Here you go.[1794.20][1794.20](applause) Here you go. And to put the icing on the cake, which is why it was not only important to recognize each of these teams individually, but to give a big round of applause because this is the first time in history that the Lompoc Unified School District has four teams that have run a CIF championship. So you guys are free to step away and we will take a 15-minute break so that all of you can grab photos and celebrate and enjoy in each other's successes. All right, we will reconvene from our celebratory events and come back to our regular agenda. City Manager Albro, your report, please.
Sure. What a great night we're having so far, I think. I wanted to let everybody know that we have the 2023-31 Housing Element Update now available. It'll be available for comment till April 17th, so if you have questions, you see Brian Halverson. I also wanted to do, we're gonna do a short video to deliver you know we've done some pretty major upgrades to Thompson Park, both the playground equipment, concrete paths, Glad you get the idea. It's really nice to see that. We're gonna do some more parks, so thank you, appreciate that. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our public comment for consent calendar. If you would like to speak to any item on consent calendar, now is the time to do so. You have three minutes. You may come to the podium or you may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if there's a call, I'll read the consent calendar into record procedure. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one calling in, I will close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Is there an item anyone would like to pull or is there a motion? Councilmember Ball.
I don't necessarily need to pull an item, but I had a couple of quick questions on item three.
Okay.
Who wants to answer towards those? Item three had to do with installing some license plate cameras. You want to give us, I think that's good news for our community because the staff report lists, and anyone that has a chance to go online and look at staff report, this is item number three, you might find out some interesting information specifically regards to stolen vehicles. So this is just a basic element. The police are working with the housing authority to put some cameras together. It's not facial recognition, they're not doing too much snooping, but maybe you could just elaborate how this system might help us with our law enforcement.
So the company we're working with is called Flock. They work with many other neighboring cities and they have already installed these cameras. The benefit to Lompoc is that the San Barbara County Housing Authority has agreed to pay for 38 cameras to be installed. The partnership is with the police department and the Flock Camera Company and their representative, Anton, he's here with us if you have any further questions. It is not facial recognition, it is simply license plate reader, which can also identify the rear of the vehicle, rear license plate, any identifiers like roof racks, even up to stickers on rear windows. The benefit to this is that once you go online with our system, it'll tell us if a vehicle committed a crime in our community, drove to Santa Maria or down south to a city that has Flock cameras, it'll tell us. Your vehicle is somewhere else now. It'll also tell us, it's gonna be around housing authority properties, so when a vehicle's stolen from these areas, which tend to be throughout the entire city, we have a possibility of identifying at what time the vehicle was actually taken, where the vehicle went to, if it's caught on other Flock cameras, when it goes to Santa Maria like stolen vehicles commonly do, and vice versa, it'll tell us if they hit a Flock camera in the city of Santa Maria as well. So it's a partnership between the Flock camera people, the housing authority wanted to put it on their properties to enhance the living conditions to their tenants, and they've agreed to cover the cost. And it's something that we look at as a great benefit to the city, great benefit to the police department, and to the citizens because that's one of our biggest issues right now is stolen vehicles. It's been reduced to a nonviolent felony, it's been reduced to a straight misdemeanor, so that is a big reason why a lot of vehicles are now being stolen.
Thank you for that, I really appreciate that. I think the thing that really stood out to me, and I'm glad that we have this system and this partnership happening, because I mean, the original numbers from, you know, five, seven years ago was, you know, let's say 20, in 2015, there was 98 stolen cars and in 2022, almost 300.
Right.
So for those that have been, you know, concerned about crime and issues and can the police do more, this seems like a very valuable system and I didn't just want to go passing by without folks understanding that some things are happening to try to make some adjustments and...
And with the staffing concerns that most every police department has right now, this is an extra set of eyes, an extra resource to help us investigate these type of offenses, so it's pretty helpful.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Vega.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we accept consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. If there are no further questions, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Now we will have a staff presentation from Planning Manager Brian Halverson regarding the City Council's Ad-Hoc Committee on 2030 General Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It'd be a short presentation here. At a recent council meeting, there was a request to redistribute the general plan comments, kind of an ad hoc committee, if you want to call it that. It was just basically receiving comments from two council members. So a little bit of background, back in July 2020, it has been a while, two council members, Councilmember Starbuck and Councilmember Vega, wanted to look at the general plan and suggest some amendments, future amendments on several elements, the land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, and the economic development element. So we brought that back to the council in 2021, and we ultimately decided due to funding that we would hold off on making the amendments to the general plan at that time. Fast forward now to 2022, we hired a consultant to make amendments to our housing element. We went ahead and included what we're calling technical amendments to the general plan. And so as part of that process, we'll bring back amendments to other elements, including the elements that the general plan ad hoc committee had made. But we're also doing amendments to our safety element, our circulation element, and we're creating a required new environmental justice element. So before I brought this back and distributed the comments again to the council, we brought it to the planning commission last month, just to have them take a look at the comments as well. They didn't have any additional comments, but they took a look at those on February 8th. So right now, our consultant is, you know, reviewing those comments, but right now, the big push, as the city manager mentioned, is our housing element. We just released that last Friday, so you have a copy of that. The ad hoc committee did make some comments regarding the housing element, so when this goes to adoption hearings, there'll be a discussion about that, and then depending on if there's a consensus with the rest of the council, those changes can be made to the housing element. So really quickly, I mean, there's a lot of markups in those comments, and I apologize if some of them are hard to read when you photocopy them, they sometimes don't show up great, but I think most of them you can see. But in short, some of the comments are changing shall statements to should, some of them are looking at deleting or revising goals, policies, and measures, also providing more flexibility in those goals, policies, and measures. And then there's kind of a theme, I apologize if it's incorrect, but kind of a theme of being more of a pro-growth approach to new development and streamlining review as well. So I think after, you know, reviewing those comments, we've had them for quite a while, but we have funding to do that, there still is some clarity and understanding that staff needs to gain from some of those comments. Some examples include maybe proposing to delete or revising something, but we don't have a lot of background regarding the why, or why those comments might have some history that we may not be aware of. So and then, of course, the community also needs to weigh in, it is the community's general plan as well, and so they need to weigh in. And how they do that, we did public workshops for the housing element, but as we do adoption hearings and we release public drafts of amendments, they'll be able to weigh in on those comments as well. Those are coming up right around the corner. So tonight, it's basically, you know, providing those comments again as the council requested, and then kind of holding for the time being because additional review and discussion will come at these later meetings, both planning commission, city council meetings, when the adoption of those amendments will come before you. So that's the presentation this evening, and I'm available for any follow-up questions you may have.
Any questions from council for Mr. Halverson? Councilmember Vega.
Brian, for years, we've had these workshops and we've had these where general plan updates come back to us, and we never seem to have enough money to do the actual amendments that come through there. Do you have any suggestions how money can be found or to do the actual amendments instead of what the state mandates are as far as circulation amendment and housing element, which basically are mandatory? So how do we get something in there that we actually want to provide pro-growth for the city as far as amendments and things? Okay, seems like we always run out of a funding mechanism here, so as we've run into everything else with budgets and everything, it seems like it's our job to, and it's to our benefit to find the sources for funding. Seems like everything is so expensive every time we touch the general plan, and you know, as you explained, any thoughts on that, on why we always reach an impasse here? Because the ad hoc committees are great for comments and everything, but if they never move forward, it's just a waste of time. You know, all we do is stall, it's a stall tactic to not make something happen so that somebody else can do more homework to find out why we can't afford it.
The good news is, we have the funding, so we have it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Gosh, you know, you let me with a mouthful, but you know what, that's what's happening with Lompoc, you know, a little bit more pro-growth would be great because we're always restricted by our own guidelines and rules, you know, as we've had that conversation, you know? So basically, a little relaxing of some of those guidelines without impacting and triggering the most expensive of environmental reviews and everything else like that. So I'll let you finish then, if you've told me that we have some funding.
We do, we've retained an environmental consultant to do the environmental review. We're hoping it doesn't turn into an EIR, we do not have funding for an EIR, but we do have funding for the environmental review, it's been already in the works. So yeah, we have the funding and we rolled it into the housing element, so we're kind of attacking all of it from different angles, including these comments. So yeah, you get a shot at it when it comes to the adoption hearings, but I also just wanted to let the council know that I'll probably reach out to the ad hoc members to kind of get some clarity because I'm the mouthpiece to the consultant, and so some of the comments need a little more clarity and understanding so that I can work with the consultant, and when I bring it back and the public weighs in on those, we'll kind of have a little more information on, like I said, the why.
Yeah, thank you. It'd be nice to see some real change as far as something that actually affects Lompoc and not just state mandates. Thank you.
Brian, over here, you let Councilmember Vega know we have funding and we're working on it. I think it's important to define what we had funding for because we're not doing the full general plan, changes that I believe the ad hoc committee commented on several sections of the general plan, and we're very focused, if I'm remembering correctly, and I don't know if you just want to touch back on that previous slide where you said the very specific areas that our consultant is working on.
Yeah, so yeah, the consultant was specifically working on these various elements, which is, oh, here it is. So the housing element, the safety element, circulation element, and the environmental justice element. But that being said, when we sent out requests for proposal, we specifically mentioned the ad hoc committee comments, and we are basically calling it technical amendments. So as Chrissy Alecon said, it's not a full, like, change of the general plan. No, we don't, we're not doing a comprehensive update of the entire general plan, but what we're kind of doing, going in there and doing some surgery of items that need to be changed or revised or updated. So yeah, the bulk of it is right there on the screen, those elements, but like I said, under the guise of also technical amendments, we can go in there and do some of these changes.
Councilmember Vega.
You know, so basically, that's under the guise of what you said, amendments due to text amendments and things like that, is what you're speaking about, the shalls and the shoulds as far as ad hoc committee recommendations or kind of survey?
Yeah, the technical amendments.
Is that correct? Okay, without making any major improvements? So you're gonna take a look at that, right?
Yeah, all of those we're taking a look at, it's just it's not a complete overhaul or a comprehensive update like we did the zoning code. That would be a much more expensive endeavor, but I think we could cover most of it, but we do need to come back and show you what we can and cannot do.
Shall or should not do, or what? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, I'm available anytime.
Good.
Most of these are not big changes that shouldn't trigger, I mean, that's outside of this. We're not gonna just say, oh, we're not gonna look at some of the changes in economic development and some of the other when we do this, are we? I mean, we're allowed four changes a year, not just this one time with the consultant, so I think we can discuss that later. I think there, a question I really have is, you say that now we are required, the word is required by the state, to include an environmental justice element? What is that?
That's a really good question, where you're gonna find out real quickly, as we are probably gonna have a draft, I would say, in the next one to two months. But in short, it's looking at making sure that, you know, people have resources that they need to have, for example, disadvantaged communities, for example, it might be income or it might be housing opportunities. It's a variety of things, food, available services nearby, it's making sure that essentially that all demographics, all backgrounds can have access to services and amenities and things like that. So it's new for us.
It's like a state micromanagement, then?
Well...
Okay.
Councilmember Ball.
So I don't want to get into all of that because that's another can of worms for a longer meeting, but I will say that from reading these very general ad hoc comments, I think there's a lot of good comments in there, so I'm anxious to learn more about this, and I'm hopeful that the staff takes some of these comments seriously. And again, I think we're all on the same page trying to find a way to be more business-friendly and provide clarity. and provide clarity. I think that's a good thing.
Any more questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Halverson?
You're welcome, Mayor. And I just wanted to let councilmember Starbuck know that we had a workshop, too, on the environmental justice element back in January, where the community market is. So that was a public reach out. We had flyers, we had, you know, display boards. We had pretty good attendance, actually, at that meeting. The second meeting, not so good at the high school, but we'll forgive them. But in general, it was a pretty good meeting there at the community market. But thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This is oral communications regarding city matters. If you would like to speak on anything not on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium or call in at 805-875-8201. You will have three minutes.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. The National Economic Security and Recovery Act has been implemented. NASSARA implements the following changes that will affect us all. Number one, zeros out all credit card, mortgage, and other bank debt due to illegal banking and government activities. Number two, abolishes the income tax. Three, abolishes the IRS. Four, creates a 14% flat rate, nonessential, new items-only sales tax revenue for the government. Five, increased benefits to senior citizens. Six, returns constitutional law to all courts and legal matters. Seven, reinstates the original title of nobility amendment. Eight, establishes new presidential and congressional elections within 120 days after NASSARA's announcement. Nine, monitors elections and prevents illegal election activities of special interest groups. Ten, creates a new U.S. Treasury rainbow currency backed by gold. Those notes are in the banks now. Eleven, forbids the sale of American birth certificate records as chattel property bonds by the U.S. Department of Transportation. Twelve, initiates U.S. Treasury bank system in alignment with constitutional law. Thirteen, eliminates the Federal Reserve system. Fourteen, restores financial privacy. Fifteen, re-trains all judges and attorneys in constitutional law. Sixteen, ceases all aggressive U.S. government military actions worldwide. Seventeen, establishes peace throughout the world. Eighteen, releases enormous sums of money for humanitarian purposes. Nineteen, enables the release of over 6,000 patents of suppressed technologies that are being withheld from the public under the guise of national security, including free energy devices, anti-gravity, and sonic healing machines. The free energy, the cell towers have been retrofitted to transmit Nikola Tesla wireless free energy. The sonic healing machines are medical beds, med beds, and they are installed in every town in America. They'll be free and administered by our military.
Once again, the number to call is 805-875-8201.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Paul Hill, and I am currently the Chair of your Human Services Commission. And I'm here this evening representing our Human Services Commission. As you know, we just completed our ratification, if you will, of our general fund, getting all messed up here, of our HUD money, if you will, the CDBG money to our nonprofits. And at that, we decided or discussed that we just don't seem to have the monies that we had in years past. So I'm here tonight to allocate, to recommend that the City Council consider the Human Services Commission request, that we allocate $30,000 fiscal year of '23-'24 services fund, and allocate another $30,000 for '24-'25 fiscal year for services fund, and allocate additional $30,000 human services fund, and provide, if you can't help us with that, provide maybe an alternate direction, how we can gain some extra monies. Some of you may remember back in fiscal year 2015, or 2015-16 was the last year the Human Services received $25,000 from the Comcast contribution of the cable on September 16, '14. The council approved a $25,000 in general fund monies to be in the process for the human services for the nonprofits and agencies that request grants. Over the years that, you know, I understand that you have to, you're doing your budget, you find things, and, but anyhow, that $25,000 dropped off, so we lost that $25,000. And the reason for the $30,000 is HUD now requires that the Human Services Commission put these grants out in $15,000 blocks. We used to just kind of nickel and dime, if you will, $2,000 here, $3,000 there, $4,000, and it just wasn't working out. And it's a lot of work for the nonprofit agencies to fill out the application and to get this little money. So $15,000 is what we're asking for. Or, excuse me, the $60,000, $30,000 per those two years. The Human Services Commission requests that the Lompoc City Council considers contribution of $60,000 to the Human Services Fund to be used for the next two-year budget cycles, '23-'24 and '24-'25. The Human Services, the Lompoc has a high poverty level, and it's many, these are the many citizens that that revenue may affect. And so with that, I would like to close. The Human Services Commission has been in charge with the duty in assessing community needs and request to provide the City Council with recommendations for fiscal support. And we ask the City Council to support the allocation of $60,000 general fund monies to the Human Services Fund to be used for the next biannual budget cycle of '23-'25. Thank you very much. I have a copy here I'd like to give to the clerk, and with that, I will leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Martin Bender. Tonight, I want to talk to you about 2011-2012. The Santa Barbara Civil Grand Jury released a report entitled "A Failure of Oversight", in which a grand jury found Lompoc City Council, among others, repeatedly failed to provide oversight to a nonprofit agency, specifically citing failures to detect contract noncompliance and failure to exercise oversight. Lompoc City Council is responsible for overseeing the Lompoc Tourism Improvement Management Agreement, which is enforced together with the Lompoc Tourism Improvement District Management District Plan. City Council has once again repeatedly failed to detect contract noncompliance and has failed to exercise prudent oversight of the agreement. Per the agreement, Visit Lompoc Incorporated, a California nonprofit, was designated as the owners' association. To date, the city has overlooked approximately 30 violations of the plan and agreement. Seven violations of Section 2.10 to submit annual reports within 60 days, one over two years overdue. Violations of Section 2.11, violations of the Ralph &amp; Brown Act, they do not comply, there are no public meetings, agendas, or minutes. Three violations of Section 5.2, increasing the city administration fee resulting in the loss of thousands of dollars to the city. One of the big points here is that in April 11, 2019, the Visit Lompoc Board approved a 1% increase to the assessment effective January 1, 2020. According to Visit Lompoc, the city council, it was subject to City Council approval of the annual report. However, consistent with the law of 1994, a request by Visit Lompoc to raise the assessment rate would have required a public hearing, notice to the affected business orders, and a written amendment incorporated into the agreement, none of which was done. The raising the rate from 2% to 3% resulted in the city overcollecting $320,000 from guests of Lompoc Hotels and then transferring that money to Visit Lompoc. We don't have their numbers for 2022 or 2023. That amount should, could well be over $500,000. We also have violations of Section 3, Government Code Section 36650, owners' associations must prepare accurate financial reports. Without going through all of them, 2021 annual report, Visit Lompoc had a discrepancy of $20,000. In 2022, it got worse. The discrepancy reached... Sorry. It was, the discrepancy was $284,795. Visit Lompoc should have a balance of $549,000, not the $253,000 that they are currently reporting.
Hello, my name is Joey White, a citizen of the city of Lompoc. I have two issues to discuss tonight. Issue number one, a stop sign at Cypress and L Street. I've lived across the street from LVMS for the past seven years, and every year, I have witnessed at least one kid attending the school, almost getting hit by a car. The city desperately needs a four-way stop at this intersection by installing a stop sign and a crosswalk. Being, being a school without, with no crossing guard, it is a huge liability for the city. I hope it doesn't take for a child to get hit before this can get approved and installed. Issue number two, impact fees on multi-dwelling projects. In 2019 and 2020, my friend and I both were building projects at the same time. Mine was a newly constructed duplex in the city of Lompoc, and his was a newly constructed quadplex in the city of Santa Barbara, discussing each other's project, costs associated with impact fees, and comparing our totals. The difference between the two was that I was paying 40% higher than he was. I thought this had to be, been a mistake. There's no possible way a project twice the size in both city limits, mine being in Lompoc with the property value significantly lower than in Santa Barbara, that I was paying 40% higher than he has. Well, I did a lot of calls and research throughout the county office, and everyone except the city of Lompoc that I had, had the same answer. The cost of impact fees are charged once, and the rest is based off of square footage. What happened to me, because mine was a duplex, two units, they took my impact fees and they charged them twice per unit. No one else throughout the county does this. Why should the citizens of Lompoc be punished for trying to clean up the city? This is a price gouging, and there should be no way that we're paying higher impact fees on multi-dwelling projects throughout the county. Prices should be lower than the higher-valued home areas in the county. Keeping this going on, as it has been going on, is a project killer. People are not going to come and help clean up the city if the price gouging continues. Here are the photos of the project, the copies of the impact fees, and the emails backing up all that I'm talking about. These are the two. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leanne Wooliver. I have lived in Lompoc since 1962, my sister Jan Manfrina, and I and our families still reside here. I went to school here, graduated in 1977 in Lompoc High. I started two businesses here. One I sold, the other is still in operation by the Dennis family. They own the Surf Connection, which was what I started in 1979. From there, I went to college, received my master's degree in special education. I retired from Lompoc Unified School District in 2017. And now I have a nonprofit called Special Parents Advocacy Group. I do own commercial property in the city. I feel I need to say this because I have been accused of not even living in Lompoc. As you can see, it's untrue. As some on this council know, this is not my first time here. I've come several, come for several reasons, and this is no different. Today, I'm letting councilmembers know that you all took an oath of office when you became a public servant. The people gave you the representational powers to follow what the people want, not to personally serve yourself, to serve yourself. And so if you didn't know when you took your oath of office, you gave the public permission to scrutinize everything you do, and if you don't like it, don't be a public servant. The people have the right to ask questions, look at facts, and inquire about things that are not adding up on paper. People can take their powers back if they feel they are not being properly represented. If found that any investigation done on any one of you turns up anything illegal or any business you are involved in that is taking advantage of the citizens of Lompoc, know it is the right of every citizen here to know what happened and the outcome. Thank you.
Mayor and councilpeople, I'm Susan Hutspeth, citizen, resident of Lompoc, California. And I'm here this evening to ask that you consider using some of the funds to repair the city streets. I've been told that we don't have enough money to repair the city streets, but there are a lot of potholes, and maybe this may not be the season for patching those potholes. I don't know. But they certainly do need to be filled in because I drive around daily dodging potholes so I don't ruin my tires or rims or something else. So please, do your duty and fill in those potholes here in Lompoc. We can't, you may not be able to entirely resurface all of the streets, but you can fill in those potholes. So that would be greatly appreciated. And just to remind you that what you do in darkness, not here in this, in front of everybody, is seen, all of us, our Creator of heaven and earth is watching, and He loves us. And so I'm gonna pray. I just pray, dear heavenly Father, that you help the mayor and the city council to serve this city of Lompoc with wisdom and courage and integrity. And I thank you in Jesus's name. Thank you.
Well, Monte Montgomery, business owner in Old Town, Jeremy, your district. Last couple of days, I got some disturbing emails from members of the city team, and just trying to be the one person in here to try and help revitalize downtown Lompoc. The hoops and the just disregard for the model that I keep hearing over and over, that we're here to be business-friendly, to actually assist with the revitalization of downtown, is just the opposite of everything I've seen. So just hoping that the council, members of the city, let's, let's change this.
All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll close oral communication and bring it back to the agenda. Next on the agenda, we have council appointments. We will be pulling the Human Service Commission appointment from tonight's agenda and only doing the Planning Commission appointment. We have one term ending 12, 2024 for District One, which is councilmember Cordova's district. We have one applicant, Ron Fink, so I will yield the floor to you, Ms. Cordova.
So this position is a position that just came open. I would like, if possible, to wait until the next meeting to give more people from District One an opportunity to submit applications. I know, you know, there hasn't been a lot of time. I really appreciate Mr. Ron Fink for submitting an application. I know he's got a lot of knowledge, and he's served there before, and I have spoken to him, and we both agree that we would like to see someone new there. But in the event that we can't find someone, I will be happy to nominate him in the future.
All right. So would you like to give it one more meeting or another month?
Another meeting.
Another meeting? So the first meeting in April, we'll bring it back. Another meeting? So the first meeting in April, we'll bring it back. Okay. So get your applications in. All right, we will move on to item number eight. Reschedule and notice a public hearing for June sixth, two thousand twenty-three for the proposed solid waste rate adjustments in accordance with Prop. two eighteen. And my, Ms. Kristi Donnelly, have you changed? Mr. Cross, you are giving the presentation tonight, are you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm filling in for Kristi tonight. At the February twenty-first council meeting, there was a solid waste rate proposal, and there were proposed rates that would be taking effect July first that were discussed. And a public hearing was scheduled for April eighteenth. We send, that we were directed to send out the notices with the forty-five days prior to that, and the notices were prepared, they were delivered and to the post office, and they did not get out due to a misunderstanding. So we pulled them back, and we are now here to reschedule the public hearing with the same rate schedules and everything for June sixth. And we will direct staff to have the notices sent out by April twenty-first, which is the forty-five-day window.
All right. Any questions for staff on this matter? All right, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, you have three minutes. You may come to the podium, or you may call in at eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. Eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. While we wait to see if there are any calls, given the time delay, I will go ahead and share that the Lompoc Parks and Rec Division is holding its annual Easter egg hunt, free event for children ages twelve and under on Saturday, April eighth, at the River Park. And pre-registration is advised. You can contact the Parks and Recs Division at eight zero five, eight seven five, eighty-one hundred. There are different timeframes for the different age groups. In order to keep the safety for the participants, that'll be on the website. If you want to go check, cityoflompoc.com/parksandrecreation. Seeing no one call in on this item, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for either discussion or a motion. Councilmember Cordova.
I move to approve for the reschedule of the notice of public hearing to June sixth, two thousand twenty-three for the proposed solid waste rate adjustment.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second.
All right. Councilmember Starbuck seconded. If there's no other questions, let's vote. And that passes five, zero. All right. Written communication. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on tonight?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Final oral communication of the evening. You have two minutes. If you would like to speak, you have two minutes. You may call in at eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one, or you may come to the podium and have two minutes to speak.
Evening again. Earlier, I talked about some of the violations in the contract with Visit Lompoc. Now I'd like to speak to the why. I've identified several violations of Government Code Section ten ninety which prevent members of city council from having financial interest in contracts. I obviously don't have time to go too far into that. I have asked a clerk to provide everyone with a copy of that. I've also identified violations of the Political Reform Act involving gifts. One gift in particular appears to be a gift of around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Ms. Cordova from a member of the board of Visit Lompoc. There's also a loan in violation of the Political Reform Act from a member of Visit Lompoc. And then finally, I have submitted or will be submitting reports to FPPC for investigation, the County District Attorney's Office, the County Grand Jury, and to the Attorney General's Office. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close oral communications and bring it back to council for comments, meeting reports, and requests. Councilmember Vega.
It was really nice to see this, this room filled tonight with kids from the Lompoc School District, Lompoc Police Department. I'd like to congratulate Chief Martin and everyone else who was here. I think that's really a plus for Lompoc to have law enforcement there with integrity and actually, people that care about Lompoc, it's important for all of us. You know, we can actually have a conversation with people that come in here that are at that caliber, which is really nice. You too, Dean, city manager also. But I, I'd like to encourage more people to attend these meetings because with the commissions and committees that are lacking still with people, we need your input so that we can help move Lompoc forward. We're all here for positive input. I believe that we need to participate and take charge of what we need to do here for our own city because if we count on someone else to do it, it may not happen the way you want it to. So take part. We need, we need the support, we need the help, and we need the input so we can make our city what we want it to be. So thank you, and have a good night.
Councilmember Stark, I mean, Starbuck, sorry.
I have no reports.
No reports. Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Cordova.
No reports.
All right. Well, many of you noticed I might not have been at the last meeting. I was in DC on behalf of the city for two different purposes. One was for the Northern California Power Agency that we are members of, and I serve as vice chair. We were in attendance at the American Public Power Agency's Legislative Rally in DC where we spoke on behalf of those of us that are public power agencies to make sure that the federal government either refrains from making additional burdens on us or assists us with some of the work we're doing. The second reason for being there was the Association of Defense Communities Conference. The city manager and I attended on behalf of Lompoc. We are the base community for Vandenberg, and it's important to do the advocacy and the work to support the base. So we were in DC for that event and had several very good meetings and introductions that will assist us in the projects that we're working on to support the base within our community. I attended the State of Vandenberg Space Force Base Annual Meeting. It was very interesting. They had over nineteen launches next year, but the prediction is anywhere from forty to fifty launches this coming year. So we will be having a lot more activity in the commercial and DOD space launch arena locally. I attended the monthly Project Opioid Meeting that Sheriff Bill Brown organizes to stay informed and provide feedback about how to approach and deal with the opioid epidemic in our communities. And I attended, as the chair, the executive committee and the regular meeting for the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. And last but not least, the League of California Cities Transportation Public Works and Communications Quarterly Workshop, which I am a member of, advocating for the needs as a full-service city with our only, our own public works division. It's important that we be part of those discussions happening at the state level and advocating for us. We have several things going on in our community. I mentioned the Easter egg hunt. On Friday, the teen, total teen youth conference put on by our youth commission is occurring. It's from nine to two at the Dewey Center. Pre-registration is recommended. That deadline is this Thursday at five PM. But it is free to all Lompoc Unified School Districts, thanks to the school district. So if you would like to attend, please don't hesitate to. You are welcome to attend. All of the teens in our community are welcome. It is really a great day to share leadership opportunities. They'll have a discussion about the opioid epidemic and give you an opportunity to, to meet students that you might not normally meet from some of the other schools. The Parks and Rec Department is also starting their adult drop-in volleyball. It started tonight. It will be Tuesdays from six to eight PM, going on through October twenty-fourth. The Aquatic Center is also sponsoring swim instructor training. For details on the exact dates, please visit the Parks and Recs page of thecityoflompoc.com. Registration is required by the twelfth of April. It's twenty dollars to attend, but if you become a swim instructor with the division within thirty days, that's reimbursed to you. As you heard earlier from our city manager, the twenty-three to twenty thirty-one general plan housing element is out for public review. Those comments should be submitted by five PM, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and that document can be found on envisionlompoc.com. The Chamber is bringing back its Old Town Market. That will occur from July seventh through August twelfth this year. There are theme nights and sponsorship is available, so don't hesitate to reach out and contact the Chamber. And given all the recent storms, the SBA loans have, the application deadline for physical damage has been extended to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. You can go to SBA Loans online and look at that information. So I do have a council request, and it's to give the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee formed by Councilmember Vega and Councilmember Ball an additional three months and an opportunity to present their results at the final meeting of July this year. It was due to come back to council at this meeting, but I know they haven't finished that, so I just want council to give them support for additional time to bring back information. If I can get a second and a third to support that.
Second.
All right.
Sounds like you need me. I'll give you a third.
It'd be great. Thank you. So we'll give you till the end of July, that last meeting in July, not the end of July, the meeting, because we don't have a July fourth meeting because it's the same day as July fourth. So we'll see that, hopefully, give you some more time to have some meetings. And then I do have a quick question for our city attorney. We've heard some questioning of the VLI contract tonight. I know that it will take some time for you to dig through the submitted documentation, but based on the existing contract, the staff review, and legal's review, have there been anything that you're aware of that would cause concern by council?
Not that I'm aware of right now, but this is the first time I'm hearing these allegations, so I may have a discussion with the finance staff to determine whether any of these allegations are correct and I'll look into that. But as of right now, I do not know of anything that's been done incorrectly.
And our most recent annual report that we received from the organization, we approved at the meeting, the last meeting in February, I believe. I think it was the February twenty-first meeting, and I think it was Agenda Item Two. So if people would like to go see it, we do get the annual report, we do review it. The contract has been in existence for quite a while, while now, and staff and our legal department do review that and would have alerted us to any concerns that we might have a need for. With no further comments, we will adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting at six thirty PM on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three.